They're not?
No.
Thanks.
Okay, alright.
I just want vanilla and for you.
That's an office. Yeah, I faxed it. I think you might. It's like, I just, I'm happy. Let's see if we're still working. We got it.
I guess.
But after they came to the announcement, Patty, can we reconnect?
No, not that I know of. I'll refer to my last girl.
Two years later. Ally is a member of the community. He's right on his agenda. Yeah, Ally.
But your involvement, it is true. I was like, what is on this agenda of the meeting? I was like, can we get the consent? Can I make this? The only thing I see on here is the baby. And I wanted to say five stop signs.
I, as far as my business is, was here, they just both freaked out. Just jumped aside down. But. Seven pounds, six ounces. And as big as she's always represented. The baby with the neck hair. I was with her all day. And she made her first appearance. But. That was awesome. I was like, yeah. I will let her know. That's always good. She actually, they got their kid in. Military. Like one of her military friends. They, they like that. A little more smell. We want to ask, what's with you?
So, I just talked.
Like just.
Fine, I'm public.
Got it, got it. I got, I was, I assumed.
It's awesome. It's awesome.
It's like a latte espresso. It's like a latte espresso. What's I thought that was like? I say, no. Like, have you even taken a sip? Ally Oriana. There's no way. It's just a daiquirre present. You don't have her name. Ally.
Okay, let's call this evening's meeting to order. Kelly, roll call, please.
Illingworth, absent. Kimbrel, here. Patterson, here. Rusterholtz, here.
This evening, first on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. And we have Ally Ori- Oriana, who is our District Accountability Committee High School representative to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ally, thank you for coming. Please stand.
Ally, you can come up to the mic. There's a mic right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, unregret, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. America, we love.
Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Before I ask for an approval of the agenda, I have to note that tonight, the Madrigals were supposed to be performing for us. And I'm really disappointed. If you've heard them in concert, they are amazing. I'm so proud of the choir and the band programs that we have here at our school. And I was so disappointed that they couldn't come. The reason that they could not come is because there were threats made against the Board of Directors. Parents were concerned about safety at our meeting tonight. The police are investigating these threats on social media. And so, parents and our administration thought that it would just be best that they not come to the meeting tonight. So, I agreed. And so, we're gonna, Tina, are we gonna get them back?
Yep, they'll probably come in January.
Okay, so we'll be looking forward to that. So, I, since they are not going to be here this evening, I need a motion to amend our agenda to reschedule the Madrigals.
Alright, well, I move that we amend the agenda for number four.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rusterholtz?
Aye.
Now, we need approval of the amended agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Move to approve the amended agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Rusterholtz?
Aye.
So, we'll be skipping over Roman numeral number four to Roman numeral five. Before we start the public agenda, or the public comment, I know that there's a lot of high, passionate feelings going on. If you've been watching social media at all, with the students stepping out this morning and coming in late, I would ask that you please use proper decorum, that you use the kind of language or conversation that you yourself would like to receive. And if not, if you can't do that, please don't participate in public comment. And I'm gonna ask that the crowd just be quiet tonight, that there not be any cheering. Or, we have a gentleman from the Woodland Park Police Department that is here to maintain order. We also have one of our school resource officers here. So, thank you in advance for friendly neighborhood. We disagree on some things. But we can still choose to be polite and kind to each other. Thank you. So, at this time, we will have public comment. Please be aware that any personal or individual student matters are considered confidential under Colorado law. And it is out of respect for the law that our employees and students, that we require those discussions to take place privately in executive session. It is requested that individual comments be limited to, what are we having this night?
Tonight, we have 13 people. So, if we limit that to four minutes, we will be able to hear from everyone.
Okay, thank you. The intent of public comment is to give the Board of Education the opportunity to hear your comments. However, the Board will make no decision or take any action on public comment during the meeting. Thank you very much. Tina, who do we have first?
So, we will start with Luke Kettler. And while Luke is coming up, our next person will be Erin O'Connell and then Mary Ward.
And Tina, we're gonna be doing this by categories of, or how are we gonna be doing it?
Because we can allow everyone to speak, I'm just reading down the list.
Got it, thank you.
So, you might ask them to introduce.
Are you timing or do you want me to time?
Alright, are you ready?
We're ready.
Good evening. My name is Luke Kettler. I'm a senior at Woodland Park High School and I'm active in many different clubs and activities here at the high school. Some of which involve my, my, some of which include my involvement in key club, theater, and soccer. I've also been active in Boy Scouts for over nine years and I've achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. I can personally give my firsthand account that this school district is phenomenal. I have been enrolled in this district since I was in kindergarten and I honestly could not ask for anything more. The teachers of this district are some of the most selfless and loving people that I have ever known. I look forward to school each and every day because I know that I will be surrounded by caring teachers and an enthusiastic student body. Through my research, I truly believe that the current candidate for superintendent position is not fit for such a high place of power. Although I'm graduating soon, I have two siblings that are freshmen and I believe that they are, they have the right to experience the amazing opportunities that I have had in the last three and a half years. I fear that this choice of candidate could strip them of that and these fears are not irrational. Comparing the average PSAT scores from Woodland Park High School to the scores of the privatized school that this candidate is currently in charge of, you can see an enormous difference. ER Boses has had a composite PSAT score of 948 for juniors compared to Woodland Park High School's score of 1,000 for juniors. It is very well possible that this, the current candidate could have an extremely negative impact on our students' academics. It is vital that we all continue to think of our students first. It is evident that the current systems in place within our district are working well. So, why would we want to change that? I fear that if the current candidate were to be placed as superintendent, there will be a decline in academic excellence and rigor that our district is known for. What does this super, this new superintendent do that makes him so much better than the current standing superintendents? Tina Cassens and Dell Jarrett have been in our district for over 50 years combined. They know the teachers, parents, and students more than anyone else. And on top of that, on top of the research I did for this speech, I also talked to many of my teachers and peers. I did not hear one complaint about Mrs., or problem with Mrs. Cassens. People said again and again how she is qualified, caring, intelligent, and an anti-problematic person. People went on and on about how she is a caring person and how they, and, and how they've known her their entire life and the amazing positive impacts that she has made on our district. Isn't this the person that we want at the heart of our community? While talking with my peers, there was another reoccurring question. Why should we even be considering replacing someone who so perfectly fits the role? We are not the drones of our parents, as suggested in a statement made by a board member earlier today. We are our own people and we are fortunate and we formulate our own decisions. Parents help us achieve our voice, not control it. On the district website, it is shared that the second principle that our school board valued, that the second principle that our school board values most is the voice of the people. My teachers are the people. My peers are the people. My family are the people. I speak for the people and this is my voice. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Luke, that was very good.
And then Mary Ward and then Chrisheed Rogers.
Alright, y'all. I've been absent for a while. I was given a lot of crap by a couple of the board members for not being here for a while. They said, I don't know what's going on. I do know what's going on. I have a job that I have to be at, working with children on Wednesday nights. I have the pulse on everything you all do. And I know exactly who Ken Witt is. He has no education background, so that's a good start for Ken. He was recalled in 2015 from Jeffco. Way to go, Ken. He publicly shamed a student in a meeting and then defended doing so. So, that's a real show of integrity for your one finalist. He is the head of ER Boses, which is on year three of an improvement plan on the performance framework with the Colorado Department of Education. I have Ken Witt's signature right here on a plan stating how serious it is and acknowledging that ER Boses has essentially not done its due diligence with its district. I've done a little word cloud graphic on the assets that Ken Witt has to be superintendent of Woodland Park. You can see here, he has a heartbeat. And that is the only asset that is listed. You'll also note that beat is much larger than heart and that is intentional. From the way he treats parents, the public, students, it is evident that he is not the change we need for Woodland Park. A survey went out to one of the, or to all of the parents. One of the questions was whether we should look for a new interim superintendent or if we should keep the current structure. If you take out the people who had no preference, 96% of parents who chose a definitive answer said to keep the current co-supperintendents. 96%, a statistic worth noting. If you say you were listening to the people, listen to 96%. This morning, the board knew about a protest that took place at the high school. Instead of taking the opportunity to show up and listen to the students and have any kind of conversation, they were conspicuously absent, except for one who was behind the scenes. David Illingworth didn't make a statement to the press. He said, quote, "I'm excited to work with him," about Ken Witt. Let's let that sit for a second. "I'm excited to work with him." The superintendent interview has not even happened yet. So, how can you know you will be working with someone before they have even been interviewed? It's almost as if this candidate has been cherry picked based on an agenda and has already been given the job behind closed doors. Illingworth just publicly stated they have skirted the entire interview process and he was already taking the role. I'd like to say this to the teachers and staff in the district. If Ken Witt is given this job, your district will no longer be recognizable. I know you are afraid of losing your jobs. I know this. But if they complete this takeover, I can say with certainty that your losses will be great in many, many other ways. It is beyond my comprehension that the board can treat students and teachers the way that you do with complete disregard to the community as a whole. That will only continue and worsen under Ken Witt. David Rusterholtz, is this really the legacy you want to leave? How incredibly sad, if it's true. Finally, tonight, I want to commend the students who peacefully protested this morning to show their concern about the board's actions. I am so proud of these kids. Sadly, the board immediately put a teacher on administrative leave. And I understand that it came from the district structure, but it was the board who was doing this to them. I personally know that that teacher didn't institute this because I know the students who started it and the teacher was not involved. It's harmful in a couple ways, y'all. First, your blatant attack on someone who was not involved shows both carelessness and ill will. Second, it undermines the students' right to peacefully protest by trying to intimidate them, by taking away someone in a position of leadership.
Aye.
I'm gonna finish my last point. Third, it takes away from the fact that these students cared enough to put this together. The board is not giving them credit for working hard, for standing up for what they believe in and taking a stance against the corruption that is happening. So, to the board, shame on you for belittling the students' efforts. I support the students and teachers of this district and it saddens me that you clearly don't.
We have Mary Ward and then we'll have Chrisheed Rogers and then Jean Harris.
I am not alone in my disagreement with hiring Ken Witt for any position in our school district, let alone the superintendent. We have filled out your surveys. We have provided feedback in your town halls. And it sounds like the feedback you received is abundantly clear. The parents, staff, and students of Woodland Park School District do not want Dell and Tina removed from their positions. We stand with teachers who are some of the best and truest advocates for students. Ken Witt is currently Executive Director of ER Boses, which has a 36% graduation rate. He does not have the education that parents, teachers, admin, and community members have agreed is important. He does not have the employment experience that those groups have decided is necessary. Witt has a demonstrated record of attempting to implement a merit-based pay scale, something known to destroy collaboration and innovation among teachers. I don't want my kid taught to a test. I don't want him to sit and stare at a whiteboard for eight hours.
Can you repeat that, please? You don't want your kids taught to a what? I didn't.
To a test? Like a standardized test? I don't want my kid to sit there and have to just learn how to fill out bubbles for a standardized test. I don't think that's a good educational experience.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking for clarification.
And could, Kelly, could you make sure she has her full time, please?
I don't want their teacher to be siloed and isolated from their peers, which is what a merit-based pay system tends to do, is isolate teachers from one another. I love the collaborative, collaborative and innovative nature in which our kids have the privilege to learn. And according to test scores, I'm sorry. I don't want my kid's teacher to not have collaboration with their peers. My kid's teacher's awesome and works her butt off. And all the teachers that I've ever met at this school district are awesome and deserve to have community and collaboration and resources and support and money and not have to get good test scores in order to make a living. We're all community members here. When any of us are suffering, all of us are suffering. And teachers who are afraid to speak up because they're worried about losing their job and feeding their children because of the way the board has come after their peers is not okay with me. Sorry, that was unscripted. But Ken Witt is willing to sacrifice all of this in order to support the agenda of his wealthy friends, Brad Miller and David Illingworth. Now, I want to turn my attention to the crowd. I guess I did that already, but. Ken Witt is the perfect candidate to line the pockets of the richest within and outside of our community, Brad Miller, while destroying the love for learning that individuals in this school district have worked tirelessly to instill in our children for decades.
Excuse me, Mary.
Yeah.
Could you just direct, say what you're gonna say, but it needs to be directed to the board? That's why you're here.
Okay, now I would like to direct my attention to the board. Ken Miller, Ken Witt and Brad Miller are perfect to line the pockets of the richest people within our community all while destroying the love for learning that individuals in this school district have worked tirelessly to instill in our children for decades. Of course, this is strategic. It would really benefit Charis Bible College if they were able to keep the citizens of Woodland Park uneducated, uninformed, and unable to critically think. It's almost like this board is working for them. This isn't about politics. This is about our kids and their futures. Whether you've been here the whole time or you just got here, we need you. Parents and the board, we need you. Alumni and the board, we need you. And students and the board, we need you. We need you to do the right thing for the children that are in this school district. We need you to listen to the voices of the people in the school district who have taken the time to respond to your surveys and your town hall meetings. We need you to hear our students and hear their stories and hear their voices. And to all the people here, thank you for being here. Please do not give hope. The people who are making decisions in our school district right now seemingly have all the money and the power, but as Margaret Mead once said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever happens.
We have Chrisheed Rogers, then Jean Harris, and then Shannon Langhart.
My name is Chrisheed Rogers. I'm a mother of two kids and WPSD. I'm speaking today to voice my deep concern about the interim superintendent hiring process and sole finalist candidate Ken Witt. During my comments, I will be referring to data from the survey most recently distributed to WPSD parents and staff. Some people question the validity of the survey due to the distribution method that is one survey per student. I'm happy to discuss with anyone why I believe it's an extremely valid and fair collection of data, which should not be ignored. But I'm cut down to four minutes, so not now. Please note, though, that none of those concerns apply to the staff survey to which I will be referring also. My first concern has already been mentioned. 90% of staff were in favor of keeping Dell and Tina. 59% of parents were also in favor. The fact that we're interviewing a finalist to replace them, I think, makes people, particularly staff, feel ignored and devalued. My second concern is that staff ranked instructional expertise as their most desired trait in the superintendent. Parents ranked instructional expertise as a very close second, almost equal to the trait of being personable. The finalist, Ken Witt, does not have instructional education, experience, or expertise. I do understand that Ken is Executive Director of ER Boses, but I want to draw a clear distinction between instructional expertise and management of a business that deals with schools. So, again, a feeling of not being heard. My third concern is that both parents and staff ranked their most important focus as academic excellence. My concern is that when I look at the ER Boses records, I see Woodland Park outperforming them. I see that they're on their third year of academic watch. I see that they are currently on a priority improvement plan. For these reasons, I don't see Ken Witt as the candidate to move us further along in our academic excellence. My fourth concern is lack of process. Once again, I feel your process was rushed at the expense of genuinely seeking stakeholder input. Compared to our past processes for superintendent searches, this process involves far fewer stakeholders. No sharing of the finalist's application or qualifications resume with the few stakeholders that are involved. And a far less robust process of receiving stakeholder feedback after the interview. To me, having only one finalist means that it was not an effective search process from the beginning.
One minute.
We deserve better than this rushed process. Members of the board, your second core belief reads, soliciting and collaborating with parents, staff, teachers, students, and community to inform our actions which value the merit of each unique student. Please mean that. I'll end with something more subjective. My read right now is that our community of WPSD staff, students, and parents are feeling fearful, sad, nervous, upset. There is so much speculation out there because you have not been clear about your vision in hiring Ken Witt as a change maker. I don't want someone that will come in and fire people. I don't want to lose our middle school building. I don't want pay structure that would destroy our collaborative culture. I don't want to lose resources for our at-risk populations. I don't want to lose great teachers who are frustrated and I'm afraid we will. I don't want to lose great families and I'm afraid we will. Please let our existing co-interim superintendents finish out this school year. Thank you.
We have Jean Harris and then Sharon Langhart and then Jacob DeSchmidt.
We have a delay in our.
My name is Jean Harris. And I just want to start out by encouraging the board members. You have a very hard job and this process seems to have made that a little bit harder. So, I just say, keep up your good heart. Keep up your good faith and just follow the process through. And you guys are gonna be the ones making the decision. And so, and along with that, I would just like to say that there's a lot of talk about the community here tonight, which I get it because it is a community consisting of students, staff, parents, and the rest of. and the rest of everybody who voted in this election to put you in the seats you're in. I heard that there was no mandate for this current board. Well, because it was only a small percentage of the voters out there. This was something that, you know, occurred during the election. That may be true, but the people who voted, voted for you, which is why you're in your seats. So don't lose sight of the fact that you were put here by a vote that was a majority of those who voted. And once again, it's a very difficult task you have. But remember, everybody that you're representing isn't seated in this room, isn't a student or a staff member of the Woodland Park School District. So all have a good evening.
Next, we have Sharon Langhart, followed by Jacob DeSchmidt, followed by Bodie Wolin.
You know, I really and truly haven't thought I'd be here again. The first time I was here was, um, when I felt at the board. I had parents coming out of the first board meeting crying because our teachers, who were heroes, became zeros. Um, as most of you know, I have students at Merit, Gateway, the middle school, and the high school. Last one that's on a scholarship to Virginia right now. What my challenge is with an interim is, is I heard a board member, and I know we're not allowed to single out, saying, we don't want to put any more work on our interim superintendents. So what are we going to do? We're going to bring an interim that has no knowledge of our school district, that was voted out by parents of eighty-one thousand children from his own board, instead of letting our schools progress. When I first came in, I wasn't sure about merit. Well, I'm an investigator. I ask questions, so I want to merit board meetings. Guess what happens there? The board inter reacts with the parents, with the audience, even if they aren't pro-merit. There's laughing, they like their teachers, they talk to their students because it isn't just a board, a Republican, an anarchy, saying, we are God, we have an agenda, and we're moving forward. I would not have come today except a board member said that the children that walked out this morning, and I don't know if it was mine or not. Didn't ask, I mean, two of you have children that you've raised, but from fourteen through seventeen, if I say black, they're going to say pearl. They're going to do what they firmly believe. And right now, we have two members, Mr. Garrick and Ms. Cassens, that listen to the students. They're hearing our students. You know, um, one of the things that really brought things home is when you were talking about your vision, about, um, studying the Constitution, studying the, you know, everything about it. And it must have pleased this board to find out that just about every class outside of Merit.
One minute.
Because I wasn't there, um, had in fact been doing exactly that. I know that, um, I looked at all your websites, been watching them carefully, and I know you want Christian values, but see, I have a problem with that. Teller County has forty-seven churches. So who's Christian values? I highly appreciate how difficult your job is, but bringing in somebody that hasn't the experience and without due process. I know it's, again, slipping through a holiday, but I really respect the fact that somehow you need to, instead of worrying about and spending an entire day learning about charter schools, maybe having a round robin, honest conversation with the teachers and the administration about the Summit Learning Program, open conversation about Summit Learning Program, what's wrong with it and what they can, you can do to improve it. Do I understand it all? No, my grandson was yelled at by a teacher, Kason. I want to see your face, not your foot. So I fully understand it.
Can you just finish up because your time is up?
Okay, one other point. Um, I've been asked to mention that Gateway, Combine, Summit, the middle school, the high school are not giving you a report tonight. But Merit is. They have their own board. They don't answer to you unless they are not doing their job. So I appreciate it, and I would like to hear from our other schools because I'm an armchair quarterback, believe me.
Thank you.
Much happier than.
Thank you. Next, we have Jacob DeSchmidt, followed by Bodie Wolin, followed by Bill Brown.
I want to start off by saying thank you to everybody for being here because you guys are the voice of our community, and this is not just something to take lightly. This is our futures, this is the, I'm sorry. This is the futures of our people, our students, our teachers. This is the futures of everybody that is involved with this town. Thank you. Hello, my name is Jacob DeSchmidt, and I am a student at Woodland Park High School and a Career Start student at Pike's Peak State College. I stand to represent my peers in providing feedback for your current sole finalist for superintendent. Woodland Park has been a crucial point in lives for many. As of recently, our motto, "Be Better Together," has taken us to new heights as educators of Woodland Park have been setting a new standard as of recent to encourage our students to strive for success. We've seen that the PSAT SAT scores have increased every year during the pandemic, and it shows no signs of stopping. This shows our distinct level of high competence. This trend is a crucial step towards the excellence of our school district as a whole. And if we nurture and encourage further growth, we could potentially observe, um, sorry.
Jacob, David up here. You do not have to rush. I'll give you the time you need to finish.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This trend is a crucial step towards the excellence of our school district as a whole. And if we nurture and encourage further growth, we could potentially observe a new era of near perfection, aiding our students towards a brighter future. See, this brings us to your choice for the, our superintendent. Your selection, the sole finalist, should be a qualified and competent candidate, right? Well, simply put, this is not the case. See, Ken Witt is not an educator. He, um, coming from a background of technology development, business management, and policy, he's clearly out of his comfort zone as he has only attained a bachelor degree in math. This is not what our district wants. According to a survey held at the Woodland Park, um, School District, an overwhelmingly large percentage of respondents reported that they desired an individual with a master's degree or above in education, not to mention the fact that Witt is not a licensed superintendent nor has any experience teaching in a learning environment. His incompetencies are so intense that during his 2015 recall in Jeffco, Witt filed an ethics complaint against himself. Standing on the interview, this morning, I, as a resident of Jefferson Comte, am filing a request for an advisory opinion with the Colorado Ethics Commission against, well, myself. This statement, as said by Colorado polls, earns him the title of the dumbest man in Colorado politics. Displays a clearly visible incompetencies in Witt. I've only scratched the surface on the different problems posed in the past, like our others have said, but let's not look and converse on the problems that present us in the future. Witt's past experiences as a board member of Jeffco ended in disaster after his recall. One of his primary reasons for the recall was his attempt to alter the district's history curriculum. This change was not minor as he attempted to get schools to teach a whitewashed version of U.S. history that promoted patriotism and downplayed civil rights issues, according to the Colorado Public Radio. This is a direct threat to our education. We've seen the agenda that Witt abides by, and if he is hired as our superintendent, he could have our education interfered with and inhibited. This takes away from our edge our school has been building over the past few years and threatens to leave students attending our district underprepared and lacking the proper education available elsewhere. This is unacceptable. This isn't the only risk poses, though. Besides the education of our students, our educators and administrators are at risk. As shown to the risks posed clearly to our history curriculum, our teachers might not be able to reach state standards on education and might face risks to their careers. The fact that our educators are too scared to speak out for themselves about this topic speaks volumes. We also see the inherent risks to mental health services available to our students. As many of these services, um, and positions are primarily grant-based and hiring an individual that, um, that appears to show no interest in any of these ideas could detrimentally affect the health and safety of our student body and staff. And these students are, these services are needed and used by our school. And no, adults are not instigating us. This is our say. We are our own people.
Next, we have Bodie Wolin, then Bill Brown, and then Corey Williams.
Sorry about the gavel. I thought he was still going.
Thank you, Jacob.
Yo. Hello, my name is Bodie Wolin, and I stand here with many other passionate, civilly active, independently driven students. There are several issues and concerns that myself and many others need to address tonight. I want to make this as brief and thorough as possible as I have plenty of finals week homework thanks to my amazing teachers who work hard to give me the best education in all subjects, especially history. First off, we need to address the sole finalist announced for the interim superintendent position. I find it utterly appalling that the Woodland Park School District Board of Education has chosen a man who not only has been investigated for violating a Minor Students' Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act and verbally attacking this minor in public, but also has been recalled from the Jeffco County School Board, or the Jeffco School Board in 2015. He was recalled with a hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-six votes. To put that in perspective, that's fourteen point three times the population of the entire population of Woodland Park. Let's see here. To put that into perspective, Jefferson County has just over half a million people, and only a hundred and seventy-nine people voted in the process total. A hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-six people voted to recall this man. A student was verbally attacked and bullied by this man. This is not a man fit to be serving our teachers, staff, parents, and most importantly, our students. This leads me to my second concern. Ken Witt was a part of a school board very similar to Woodland Park's current members serving. His old board caused national tension for the criticism of an AP U.S. history course for having a lack of patriotism. History is not about teaching only the good parts of the United States. It is about teaching all aspects, sides, viewpoints, in a non-biased perspective to students. History is doomed to repeat itself if not taught, so students are not manipulated into thinking one way or another and instead have the knowledge needed to move on as a strong, just nation. Manipulation sounds pretty similar to what a certain individual on this Woodland Park floor claimed about students like me being manipulated by our parents afternoon. Thus, this brings up my last concern. We, the students of Woodland Park, showed up this morning to protest your incredibly horrible and stinky decision made by the last special meeting. Uh, we showed up because we wanted to be valued as students, and we want our voice heard. In which many last years, with anything from standards-based grading to the funding of certain programs, to specific murals on walls, all have been ignored, and we have been given a fake face of listening instead. Students from every part of this high school showed up in freezing weather this morning. I want to emphasize this. All kinds of students showed up from all different types of beliefs in parts of the school. Groups that typically disagree with each other came out in unison today. To contradict the claim made by a specific board member this afternoon, once again, we are not manipulated by our parents. High school is the time of formulating our own opinions, and well, yes, rebelling is against our parents is part of that. Students with parents that are from all different backgrounds, reaches of lives and beliefs showed up today on their own will to participate. Parents are who help us as students and young civilians. They are who encourage us to do what we believe is right. It is sick to make accusations that our parents manipulate us and not the cool kind of sick. The conclusion, we, the students, are fed up with your history of detrimental decisions and we have, that have directly impacted our safe environment at school and our ability to learn without worrying about the future of our classes and teachers. When will the next spy come to seek out books that we have to feel safe in an environment that can often be hostile? What happens to our teachers that we believe, that believe in a holistic education? Whose FERPA, whose FERPA rights will be violated next? If it has happened once, it will happen again. And that's why many of the student body is done with your utter distaste for our learning and utter interest in politicizing us in American exceptionalism, whatever lightest meaning that is supposed to portray. We are proud, American-made students, and we are here to practice our civil duty as so commonly mentioned on this board. Myself and many others strongly oppose Ken Witt as a prospective interim superintendent, and we will not stop until we get the education we deserve and the environment we deserve. We will not stop until we feel secure in our schools and don't have to worry about what will come tomorrow from indecisive childish adults. We want to be valued, and Ken Witt is nothing but a move to de- about, de-elevate our education and cut our lifeline, not support it. If our education is not elevated, we will fight for it until we win. Thank you.
Followed by Corey Williams, followed by Aaron Helstrom.
My early years were spent on a ranch in Montana that my family owned. And it's on this ranch that I learned many of the really significant life lessons that have shaped who I am, including a life lesson that I would like to share with this board tonight. You see, on our ranch, we raise chickens, and we cut these chickens for eggs. We also butchered them to eat. Now, for those who have never been around butchering a chicken, it's not the most fun process in the world, especially because part of that requires removing all of the feathers from the chicken. In this process, the hardest part is removing what are called the pin feathers, the closest feathers to the chicken's body. They usually have to be burnt off over some form of heat. This is usually done through a torch or just some small heating element. My grandfather got the great idea that there was an easier way to do this. Take a piece of plywood, nail ten chickens to it, pull the meat burner out, and do it that way. What ended up happening was we had ten chickens that were burnt beyond recognition. We had a board that was on fire, and in fact, part of the yard was also on fire. Which brings me to the connection that I'd like to make in terms of our district right now. My grandfather taught me that day, you need to use the right tool, and you should not take shortcuts. I would argue that right now, this board is not looking at the right tool, or should I say, the right person to be our superintendent. We need somebody right now who can keep our schools and our students on the positive learning curve that they are currently on. As has already been stated, our district has been improving in its educational goals, both in terms of test scores as well as post-secondary readiness. And whomever is the person that steps in needs to be the tool that has the right educational background to be able to continue this trend. In another realm, a year ago, I will tell you that the mood in our schools was one of encouragement and excitement. People were excited for what the future held. Parents, students, teachers were eagerly looking forward to what might be accomplished. Now, to be very blunt, the mood in our schools is one of anxiety and frustration. Our district needs the right tool or the right person, someone who can help rebuild a positive culture that includes every single stakeholder in our schools. Next, the superintendent must be someone who can restore trust in our district. Right now, as I am out and about in the community, as I talk with parents and teachers, community members, there is a large majority that tell me they don't trust this school board, nor do they believe that this school board has what is best for our school, uh, what is best for everyone in front of their agenda, which brings me simply to this. As we look at who is the potential candidate for superintendent, you're looking at an individual, a tool, who has a proven track record of sowing division, discord, and causing a mass exodus of teachers within a district. And there's many other pieces, the falling test scores, attacking students, et cetera. So let me simply say this. As we move forward, as we look at Ken Witt, this board needs to choose the right tool. If they do not, they will end up, just as my grandfather did all of those years ago, with an absolute disaster, with a mess, with a district that is thoroughly and completely destroyed. and completely destroyed.
Followed by Aaron Helstrom, followed by Carol Greenstreet.
Good evening, members of the board and the public. I'm a man of faith. I'm a veteran of the United States Army. I am the infantry. My name is Cory Williams. And I don't like making this trip up the mountain, but I'm here and I don't like repeating myself either. I've been told there's corruption in our midst. I've told there's some deep-rooted hate in this community. There are members of this board that have a hand in the police harassing citizens and are bullies to their cowardly cores. I'm also told that these bullies claim to be religious in some manner and they can't be Christians. They can't serve the same God that I serve on high. There are words on a beautiful mosaic on the front of this building and they read elevate your education. I have heard of violations of sunshine laws and manipulating the validity of police investigations. All for the sake of children is hot wash. It is foul and least patriotic of all the things that I could name. You're not here for children or their well-being and they showed you that in their walk-in this morning. Imagine losing those students. Then what purpose would you serve? I'm a faith-based advocate of change and this is your call to morality. There should be moments of self-reflection during this holiday season. And those not here as well as those present should know people who are chosen to lead the people should be fearful of their lives. They are to serve the people and the people only. There is no reason why I should be amongst so many constituents that capacity is met and people turned away. That means something is severely wrong. You are not upholding your oaths of office. And those of you who have the power to sway public safety and police officers should be hailed to the, should be hailed and punished to the fullest extent of the law. And those of you who sit idle and watch should be hailed in the same manner of treasonous accomplices, as treasonous accomplices, accomplices, I'm sorry. Again, this is a call to your morality. Exodus 18:21 says, "But select capable men from all the people, men who fear God, who are trustworthy, men who hate dishonest games, and appoint them as officials over thousands, hundreds, fifties, and tens." The key words, there are men who fear God. Galatians 6:1 says, "Brothers and sisters, if someone is caught in a sin, you who live by the Spirit should restore that person gently, but watch yourselves, as you also may be tempted." So this again is your call to morality. Those of you who are too weak should step aside and resign. And so to angrily repeat myself, I don't like coming up this mountain and I would truly hate to do it again.
One minute.
You called students drones earlier today. You better listen to these teachers, these parents, these children, because without them, your seats mean nothing. There is hate in this community and your children know it. Thank you.
Followed by Carol Greenstreet and then Chase Steele.
Good evening. Can anyone hear me in the back in cheap seats? I too am a veteran, United States Marine of 22 years. And I don't know what gospel you're reading, but that scripture is taking out context. Now, I stand tonight because I, as concerned parent, have heard half-truths tonight. First of all, I don't prejudge a man I've not met, I've not looked in the eye, not shook his hand. I don't see any police reports because I know for a fact we do a background check on these people. If he has any police record, he's not going to work with our kids. If he bullied someone, cops would have been called in. So let's stop putting fear out there on things that are not evidentiary. Number two, my son, when he was a sophomore, had a teacher teaching critical race theory. That's antithetical to the Constitution of the United States. I have written the board, the board is aware of this and I'll leave it at that. So don't tell me that everybody in this school that teaches is a great teacher. When I have teachers pushing theories that go against the Constitution that I fought to defend, my friends died for and were buried under that flag, we dishonor them. I expect to have a voice and I expect those who oppose me to have a voice. What I don't expect is when we take and we dishonor and trash people. I told Dell at the DAC meeting on Monday, honor, honor is how we treat people. I don't think they should go the way the white ball low. I think they should be a part of our school system. But if they're led by a leader, one person, because that's what a leader is. You don't have two tiny commanders, you got one. We need one direction, one voice. I love them both and they're both professionals and they're experts in their field. Doesn't mean that they're going anywhere. I hope they don't. Doesn't even mean that this guy's going to get hired. I, as a representative of the DAC, have an opportunity to ask questions on Monday, or the chairman. The point is, why not let the process be the process? That's the way we work. That's, this is not a democracy, this is a republic. It's a republic. And too many people are thinking, well, hey, our voice is louder than yours. This board was recalled and by a large margin, they were not ousted, they were left in. That is a mandate. They're moving forward with that mandate to get a director in. I don't like two co-chairs. Why? Who do I hold accountable? Well, that's Dell Field, so I should fire Dell for this failure? Or should I fire Tina? Or do I fire him both? No, we need one person, that's what leadership is. We, the people, elect the board. The board elect a person, one person, to lead this system. We hold them, the people, accountable. They hold the superintendent accountable. Superintendent holds the principals accountable. Number three, or four, no one's going to get fired. The only person that's ever got to be worried about being fired is someone who's doing something illegal. Because I guarantee, if I worked here, go ahead and fire me. Because then I'm going to launch a lawsuit and I'm going to win millions of dollars for being erroneously fired. Now, if there is reason for calls for my dismissal, I might worry. Let's voice our opinions, let's stop attacking people. Because how would you like it if we prejudged you before you arrived here and said, this person is rotten and horrible and all these things, we never met him? Yet we call for equality. We call that we're level-minded people, we're intelligent people. We accept everyone, yet we don't accept this man. He was recalled, he was on a board of education. Doesn't mean he can't lead here. Maybe he's not good there, maybe he won't be good here. Maybe he'll bomb out in the interview, I don't know. But let's give it a chance and let's stop being knee-jerk reaction. Thank you. Oh, and lastly, I go to Caris. And I am a part of this community and I don't like being called stupid because I believe in what that school system does. They revamped veterans' lives. And now you just insulted veterans and people whose lives are being changed up there because you disagreed with their opinion. Let's disagree, but let's not attack. Thank you.
Okay, Carol Greenstreet and then Chase Steele.
I'd just like to say real quick before you start, Carol. I don't think anyone has been heckling until just now with Aaron. You may disagree with him, but please show respect and don't heckle him. Not anyone. Everybody has, is, has the authority permitted to comment, speak tonight. Please continue to show respect. Go ahead, Carol, thank you.
Good evening. I want to speak on something that actually Aaron just mentioned and Aaron, thank you for your service. All the veterans in here, I really appreciate you. I have a son who graduated from this high school who is currently serving the military. And there is a lot, there's a lot of sacrifice. I appreciate that. I do want to say though, that I disagree with what Aaron said about the recall. And that's really where I want to start because I feel like there's not much been said about it. And I think it's important that we talk about it a little bit. The recall didn't actually fail by a large percent. It barely missed getting a few of the candidates on the ballot. I don't know if any of you have ever been involved with the recall before, but it is very challenging. And it was met with a lot of resistance and things that were said that weren't true. And it was a big political push against it, trying to make it seem like it was a bunch of liberals when in fact, it was a bunch of community members from all sides of the aisle, all faiths. It were a bunch of people that were really concerned about what they were seeing here. And I just want to tell you, well, first of all, I think we could use something humorous right now. So I'll tell you about one person that called me and wanted to sign. And it was a 96-year-old woman who had grandchildren and children, both graduated from here and now have great-grandchildren on their way to this school district. She is very conservative. In fact, she had a coffee table book that said, the title of it was, "Help, There Are Liberals Hiding Under My Bed." I found it hilarious, I didn't look at the book, but I thought that was very funny. There were many people that signed the petition that voted for this board. And they voted for it because they saw the conservative mantra that was, that advertised them. They also said that they were very unhappy with the way this board had acted and were not in support of some of the things they did. There were some people that we asked that did support the board and did not sign the petition. There were people that didn't agree with the board but also don't agree with recalls, that didn't sign the petition. There were many people who understand that it's not like a vote, that a petition is something that their signatures can be seen. And they declined to sign because they were concerned that their name would get out in the community. There were people that called me too late to sign. And so there actually is quite a bit in this community in terms of people that are not happy and not just the people that didn't initially vote for the board. There are people that did vote for the board. I want to talk about the recent survey that you guys, that the school district did and the percentage of people that supported keeping Tina and Dell in place for the year. And the main concern that I have with that is you all have talked about how your customers are the parents. And in this survey, the customers overwhelmingly said that they want to keep things as they are. Your employees said overwhelmingly they would like to keep things the way they are. Any businessman would tell you that if you are chasing after some customers that you don't have, at the risk of losing the customers that you do have, it's a terrible business model. Same with your employees. It's very important to listen and collaborate with the parents as you have said is your, one of your primary concerns. Listen to the parents.
Yeah, final speaker tonight is Chase Steele. He's outside.
Hello all, I am Chase Steele. I am the Warden Park Senior Student Council President. I would like to start about me. I was raised from preschool to seventh grade in a charter school. And then in eighth grade, I moved to Warden Park. In this charter school, the person I was, was a very shy person. I would rarely speak up in class and I just really had no personality to me. To back this, one time I went to summer camp and I was voted the quietest person because I said max five words there in a whole span of five days. And then flash forward, I came to Warden Park in eighth grade. This was the best decision I have ever made in my life. This school has changed me in a tremendous way that I can't explain. It was through my Warden Park soccer program and my Warden Park speech classes and my Warden Park leadership program. And as the Warden Park community as a whole, I'm now the person who is not afraid to stand in front of all of you today. I understand why your people were elected. This town and this county is a majority-ruled Republican county. And Ken Witt, your frontrunner, runs on those same values. And whether you agree with these values or not, Ken Witt is not the right person for this position as it has been greatly pronounced by the rest of the community members and the rest of my student community. Ken Witt, okay.
Let him have the rest of his time if that's okay. Yeah.
Chase, take your time.
Thank you, thank you. Warden Park's school spirit is at an all-time high. Academic success is at an all-time high. And our athletic programs are at an all-time high. Regardless of your political opinion, putting Ken Witt in the office is jeopardizing all of these statistics, all of this stuff that Warden Park School community has worked so hard to build in the past couple of years. To conclude, electing Ken Witt is putting political opinion over people's lives in the community of this town. He is not the right person for this position regardless of what he says as a political figure. Thank you.
Are there any more? Do you want to say something? Thank you everyone for your comments tonight. Next on our agenda, we have our consent calendar. Do I have a motion to, for approval of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Roster Holtz?
Aye. Okay, we have two items for discussion this evening. We have an update on the interim superintendent interview process by our board subcommittee. And we just have Cassie here this evening. So Cassie, what do you have for us, a schedule?
Just the interview with the DAC on Monday, on December 19th at 6:00 PM, is that correct? You were at the DAC? That's what I heard back from you guys that worked with their staff.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let me just, just want to make sure that this isn't here. One thing, we had a great meeting with the District Accountability Committee on Monday night. It's a great group of people, very diverse in their approaches. I appreciate some of you are here tonight. We spent some time putting together, they spent some time putting together questions. The chairman, Seth Bryant, is doing an amazing job organizing and putting those questions together in categories to ask Mr. Witt. So I think it is a very good process that they're going through, very well-thought-out and organized. So that is going to be open to the public. I just want to get a feel, it's very passionate tonight as well and to going into that. I'm guessing that will most of you want to be there Monday night or available to be there? I want to make sure that if there's a lot of interest, that we do have it in the auditorium. And I believe the auditorium is available.
But not tonight, huh?
We're talking about Monday night. We did not know what tonight would be.
Yes, we did. I'm sorry, I'll save myself.
So Monday night, I want to make sure that there's enough for everyone and that we don't have an overcrowded situation like we do this evening. So we will be having it in the high school auditorium. No, I don't think that's perfect.
It will take two days ago.
So that's about it for... Is there anything else I should mention about Monday night? Dell, you were there.
No, there's just the decision for Monday night interview beginning at 6:00 at the auditorium.
Okay.
And two, I believe it was decided, two types of sessions, the DAC asking questions, followed by the board taking that information in and asking questions as well.
Right. Also, the DAC will be reviewing the answers to their question, giving a report to the Board of Directors on the answer and their opinion on each one of those questions. So that's the process, how that's going to go. We have two other DAC... We have, how many more DAC members do we have here tonight? Do either, I would like to hear from any of you, since we don't have a real long agenda tonight. Is there anything that I'm missing that I should be saying? Oh, Ally. Ally had some great questions, by the way, that she put up. I really appreciate her participation on the DAC. Ally, is there anything else that I should be saying or mentioning?
We've covered it. We're getting a bunch of feedback from those of you who want to give it a try.
Can you stand up, Ally, just so I can hear you?
All right. We are collecting feedback from those who come to meetings, for those who watch it. So send it to the DAC email address, and we provide those to all of our stakeholder representatives in the DAC, that we review them, and then we send them to the board for review. So be there and give your feedback.
And that email is posted on the website under the DAC.
So that's live now? We can actually contact people appropriately on the DAC?
Yes, we will make sure it's one email address. And so we'll make sure that's posted to the DAC, which is on our main page. If you look under...
Under Board. Board.
And then Accountability Committees. The DAC would be there, and we will have...
Contact them appropriately.
We will make sure the email is posted, and it's one email. So one collective email for the entire DAC.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Any other DAC member have anything that we need, we should add to, just for information this evening? Okay, well, thank you.
Is Cassie there?
Well, I...
Oh, Cassie.
I just had a question. Like, that email address, from what I heard, wasn't even decided. Was that decided last Monday, please?
Yes, it was decided.
Okay, so it was just a new thing for, okay.
And the way it works is that all the DAC, all the emails come into one place. Let's say you're sending it to Cassie, which is not on the DAC, or to Ally. It'll come into one email box and then be distributed to the individual DAC members. So if you want to write to somebody in particular, you can still do it that way.
Well, thanks for the update. I had that question from several parents as well. And so I thought that decision wasn't even made until this week. So, okay, thank you.
Anything else with the schedule?
No, no. We just wanted to wait until the DAC members to decide. And what we heard from the board members that sit on the DAC, you guys came back and said, hey, this is the date that works for us. Saturday was too much, this previous Saturday. And there's more people that can make it on Monday versus Saturday. And so that was just, I wasn't there. That was the feedback we heard from you. And so we were open to whatever.
Yeah, most of the DAC members could make it on Monday night. That was the reason for the change. I wanted to make sure there was as much participation as possible. Anything else, Dell?
Nope, that covers it.
All right. Onto an update on the Board of Education Director vacancy timeline. Tina, I think you know more about the timeline. Kelly. Kelly is our timeline expert.
It is currently...
Not to put her on the spot or anything, but let's put her on the spot.
Yeah. So it will be advertised. It's currently on our website. However, with the deadline of the paper, it will not hit until next Wednesday, December 21st. It's open until Friday, January 13th, 2023. It's for Director District A, which is an at-large vacancy. And so to qualify for that, you have to be a registered voter within Teller County for at least 12 months, minimum. And also, you have to reside within the attendance boundaries of the entire Woodland Park School District.
Could everybody hear that? Okay, good. Anything else? I guess not. All right. And is that posted on the school website?
Yes.
All right, so all information is there. And onto our next. An action for Board of Education Secretary vacancy due to Director Austin's resignation. So is there is an office position open that we need to be filled? So...
I would like to make a motion to appoint Director Kimbrel as the new secretary.
I would certainly second that motion.
Yeah, I'll accept.
You will accept?
I'll accept.
All right.
I don't have a choice anyways.
No, not really. So is there any more discussion about Cassie being our secretary? I'm all in favor of it. So Kelly, roll call.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Roster Holtz?
Aye.
Thank you, Cassie. Next, we have reports and updates. One of my all-time favorite updates is the always clever and witty Nate. Thank you so much. If you have not been here for some of the things that Nate has presented, you want to talk about inspirational, and you would never know that this gentleman is a math connoisseur.
I do admit, I have definitely worked on improving my public speaking skills. I will tell you that I have a very deep passion for the profession of teaching and for my students. And those things are what inspire me. And that's why I stand up here as the WPA representative, to have the voice of the staff representative. So tonight might not be as witty. So if you're looking for an inspiring speech, I hope that I do inspire you.
Nate, I always appreciate the things you have to say.
As you can see, I've got a little bit more written than normal. So I will do my best to take my time. So to start off, good evening, Board of Directors. Good evening, co-interim superintendents. Thank you for being here today. The first thing that I'd like to mention comes near and dear to my heart. I would like to recognize our middle school staff because this week has been filled with sorrow and pain. We've lost a 7th grader this past weekend, and this death has been felt across our district. This student, not only was a 7th grader at the middle school, but was also attended Gateway and some at elementarys. And I know that our team has come together to support our middle school staff and these elementary staffs that have known this child. They've come to support their own students, first and foremost. And then our staff has come together to support each other at this time of crisis. There is no other group of professionals that I have ever seen that has come together this well in times of crisis. We support each other. Additionally, tonight, I'd like to thank Dell and Tina for their tireless efforts. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. You guys have put in time and effort into building a culture of excellence this year. You have earned the trust of the staff, and you have inspired us to be great. Vulnerability is not about winning or losing. It's having the courage to show up and be seen when we have no control over the outcome. These two have stood up, and they have been there. They have shown up, and they have been seen. They continue to do this. They have integrity, and they have built a culture of community that is better together. Thank you. I need to follow their example and be a little bit vulnerable. There are some things that I need to say that need to be heard, but they might be a little bit hurtful. If you want change, the only one you can do is start with yourself. I know that I have changed a lot since I've taken on this role. And I've changed for the better. The culture of a district, of a school district, starts from the top down. The superintendent of a school district really affects the culture of more than just the district. And people don't realize how much the superintendent is impactful. The superintendent sets the tone for the administrator team, which in turn sets the culture for each individual school and the students that attend there. This first semester of this year has been absolutely fantastic in each of our buildings, for our staff, our students, and our community. And we can thank Dell and Tina for that inspiration. However, I have since read a survey that's been released as of this morning on the website that had a vast majority of the parents, you've heard some of the statistics, 96% of our parents support to keep Dell and Tina as the interim superintendents for second semester. And with observing a lightning-fast application period and a hiring process with only one finalist's name, I come before you tonight to give you a clear and accurate pulse on the current condition of the Woodland Park School District staff and what we're experiencing. With any change, there's fear. There's fear, whether that fear is going to be a change for the better or for the worst. We don't know. There's something about having the unknown that brings a sense of fear to a community. I've heard this time again and time again. President Roster Holtz, you've said that you're going to be bringing in an agent of change. And change is scary. When you bring, when you tell us that, the staff here and the students here, that we're not doing good enough, we hear that the performance that the students are doing, that the staff are pouring into these students' lives is just not good enough when we hear we're bringing in an agent of change. The data speaks otherwise. I will personally speak, and I've done the research. I know that our staff are doing well, and I know our students are doing well. In fact, this district is the only district in this region that has improved in every composite and total SAT score in this region over the past three years over the pandemic, from 2019 to 2022. And that includes every district down the hill and every district up the hill. And that includes some of the academic powerhouses. That includes Cheyenne Mountain Academy District 20, not to mention that we have outperformed D-11 and D-49 faculty. Manitou has outperformed us in the most recent, but they've also had losses in their game where we have still shown growth. The data speaks. And that data is available on the CDE website for public to observe. Like, the data is out there. If you'd like to see my documents, I've got lots of them. When the application for our new superintendent no longer included any requirements of a degree in education, and the only finalist doesn't have a degree beyond a bachelor's, that devalues our educators. Many educators are educated at a master's level or beyond. We want someone who knows our craft. We want someone who values public education. And we want someone that supports us and empowers us to be great. And I'm not talking about just the five Woodland Park schools that are under Woodland Park School District, but I'm also talking about Merritt Academy because they need somebody to inspire them to be great as well. This leader will represent all of us. We want someone who can lead us teachers to continue to show improvement. I'm a firm believer that I want to grow, and teachers believe that as well. We are a growth mindset community. Right now, it is obvious to us teachers that the application period was too short and the net was not cast wide enough to get enough quality candidates to be ready to beat WPSD. If the board was only able to name one finalist that they could support, then the applicant pool was way too small. At best, this is bad business practice. This would never be accepted by a successful private sector company. At worst, this is not consistent with American ideology. It is an American ideal to provide healthy competition to bring out the best of the candidates and not create a monopoly. This board needs to postpone signing an interim superintendent and reopen the application during a normal superintendent hiring period to draw the most qualified applicants possible. This will allow the board to lead by example. This will allow you guys to give a demonstration of what it means to be a great American citizen. We as educators, we want to know that our students are kept safe. And we want to know that they're treated with respect. Our nation was founded by a group of radicals that said enough was enough. And they wrote a constitution and stood up together to form a nation of unity, so that way everyone would have rights. All of us, educators, administrators, school staff, students, parents, and this community deserve a voice. We should all be asked to work in collaboration with this Woodland Park School Board to make sure that we have the best and the brightest and that the decisions that impact our district are the best for our community. The only group right now that has been asked to weigh in on such a heavy decision is the DAC, who only has, as recently as two days ago, opened up one email address for input communication to them. It was just announced tonight what that was, but I think it is on the school website. A republic has its voting members voted in by the public and not appointed by some executive branch. This DAC does not represent a republic, which troubles the staff deeply. As your purpose statement and the core values that you have decided for our district is that Woodland Park School District exists to establish a common foundation of knowledge that cultivates educated citizens who appreciate and contribute to this great American republic. This morning, I watched a lot of students exercise their freedom granted by the same Constitution. They are seeking the opportunity to be valued by this board, and they want to have their voice heard. Your core value statements? Number one says, "We believe that the district philosophies that align with parental choice and build systems oriented to parental expectations and values." To you, only their parents' opinions matter. Students should have a say in their own education. After all, it is their life that they have to get ready for. And by the way, an overwhelming majority, and I've already mentioned this, the 96% of the respondents to the parent survey, both community members' parents and district staff alike support our current co-superintendents, Dell and Tina. They support them to finish out the school year. Also in that survey, the number one characteristic trait desired by this community was instructional expertise, which both Dell and Tina possess. They have been educators in the classroom. They've both been administrators in this district, and they both have served this community well. Teachers always want to be able to focus on our job and our students. Right now, teachers are distracted, and they feel powerless to be able to do the job that they want to do, and that is support students. Teaching is a career, not a temporary stop on the way to another job. Students are going to be successful when teachers are well-trained, trusted, and given the opportunity to be leaders in their schools and classrooms. Teachers absolutely put their kids first, but it's really difficult to do that when you have a board majority that continues to put their personal and political agendas before kids. Students, parents, educators, and community residents of all cultural backgrounds should feel safe, welcome, respected, and valued in our Woodland Park schools. With the process that you've chosen for picking the next superintendent, teachers don't feel supported by this board. It feels like you're putting your personal and political agenda before the current needs of our district. We need to maintain the course that Dell and Tina have already established this year and pursue a new superintendent during the next year. and pursue a new superintendent during the normal hiring timeline. Del and Tina have been unifying our districts to make us better together. Please, I beg, I ask, I'm making a statement. Afford us, the educators, to finish this school year better together. Thank you. I'm sorry, I forgot to give you the opportunity to ask me some questions if you...
I didn't have a question and then I forgot. Go ahead.
No, I don't have a question. Thank you, Nate. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Next, Dr. Gwen Peckron, Merritt Academy update.
Thanks for having me here tonight to provide Merritt Academy's monthly charter update.
Thank you for giving us an update. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. So, I'm taking this in a completely different direction. Like many of the schools at this time of year, we have several wonderful activities in place and are already planning for future events and opportunities. I do want to say Magicals is one of my absolute most favorite things ever in this community, and so I will be here in January to hear them. On Saturday, Merritt Academy competed in our first Science Olympia tournament at Cheyenne Mountain High School. Nineteen of our upper school students won first through third place medals in several categories, including bridge engineering, rocks and minerals, crime busters and criminal forensics, roller coaster design, flight design and testing, dynamic planet, and forestry. Thank you. There is another Science Olympia tournament in February in Pueblo prior to a state meet, which I'm not sure will make state, but it'll be, we'll keep you posted. Our students and staff are diligently working at closing out the semester strong, as are, I think, pretty much every school in the district. And both our concurrent enrollment college course for English and our English one course, our freshmen just completed their latest book, The Scarlet Pepper now, which led them to a deep discussion of the French Revolution. And within our core knowledge curriculum, our sixth graders studied the French Revolution and they just closed out that unit with a French Revolution reenactment, including Skittles and taxes. It was quite engaging and it was fun to watch. To follow along the theme of our horizontal alignment of curriculum across subjects in each grade, our eighth graders' most recent readings were both Knight and Coke Doctor in English class. They also engaged in the Socratic conversation regarding World War II and history. This is our purposeful planning to support the horizontal alignment in a knowledge-rich curriculum. As an example of our vertical integration, which is a core component to our school, our eighth graders have been visiting our first graders to teach them the method, the Socratic method of discussion and discovery. It's really awesome to see how our older kids are stepping up to help our younger ones understand how to ask questions and dive deeper into any of the topics that's not just superficial. So digging deep as far as that education goes. Several of our freshmen are entering, excuse me, ending the semester, having earned three concurrent enrollment English 1021 and/or four concurrent enrollment 1034 college algebra credits through Pitts Peak State College. Next semester, these students will move on to English 1022 in college trig, earning up to 14 credits of guaranteed college credit in their freshman year. We are also planning next year's offerings, adding more college courses for our students through PPSC and potentially the UC system, including U.S. History and English Lit. We are also adding AP Bio besides the other sophomore classes like Chemistry, Geometry, and more. Next semester, we are piloting a Young Eagles program for our Civil Air Patrol students, wherein they need be tracked to compete, complete their FAA technical exam and also earn enough piloting experience to qualify them for their aircraft pilot license upon completion of a multi-year program. This poises them well for commercial cadet pilot programs when they graduate. We will also keep you posted on this aviation track and how it not only grows, but at the same time becomes more focused and purposeful for our students interested in aviation, aerospace science, or military careers. Our teachers are also closing out their semester reflections for their evaluation and professional goals. Our evaluation process not only includes a discussion of pedagogy, communication, and leadership, to name a few, but also centers on our own core values, virtues, excuse me. One of the requirements for our seniors prior to graduation is they must prepare a portfolio or an essay answering questions like, "What does goodness mean to you?" or "What does it look like to be a responsible citizen?" We cannot ask our students to answer these questions if our staff cannot model these very virtues themselves. Finally, I want to congratulate Woodland Park High School's cheer squad and their state championship. As a coach and an athlete, I understand that this was an incredible feat in results of countless hours in training, practice, fortitude, and mental perseverance. So congratulations to these young ladies. As community members, we are quite proud of your accomplishments. Also, a little aside, the Woodland Park High School swim team is doing very well this year. My daughter is a freshman swimmer on the team. In the first race of the season and for the first time ever, the 200 medley relay team qualified for state. Conversation throughout our charter process centered around sports and how sports and teams are a sample of the cohesion in a community. This medley team exemplifies that same concept. Four local girls work together to make this qualifying time. Hannah Nguyen, a junior who attends University School, Kelsey Peckron, a freshman at Merritt Academy, Ellie Geisler, a local homeschool freshman, and Macy Lundgren, a Woodland Park High School senior. These girls and all the girls on the high school team are cohesive and very supportive of one another. I really enjoyed watching them and rooting them all on as they continue to improve their times. I think this team and likely all the other teams as well are a great example of how our community comes together with a common goal. I also want to thank your staff, particularly Miles and Ron, as they have worked on that portable and gotten it ready for us to be able to eat indoors. Particularly, timing is great, so thank you for putting that together. They have been phenomenal on that. So thank you for returning tonight and I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a safe New Year.
You had said something I thought was intriguing. Do you have your eighth graders working with the little kids?
Yes.
Is that a regular part of your curriculum there?
Every couple weeks, the eighth graders go down into our first grade section and they teach them Socratic seminars. So we, it's, can't call it speed dating, but it kind of is. So the kids are lined up and they're talking about one of their first grade books and they discuss the theme and the characters and so forth. And most of the time, the questions from the first graders are very beginning and superficial. And then the eighth graders will say, "Well, how can you ask that deeper?" And so the kids start to ask pretty deep questions or "What happens if this changed?" or things like that. And so it's really fun. It's intriguing.
Glad for sharing that. Also, the encouraging word that you said of how we can all get along and how kids naturally get along with, like with the medley relay. That's a great example.
It's fun. It's so much fun. Swim team is awesome. My daughters loving it. They've been very welcoming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you got two questions for her, but nothing about that your staff and teachers are suffering?
Let's be ordered. Erin.
I'm sorry. I will leave. It's gonna take me a second. I, it is just proving.
Erin.
Their point. It proves this point.
That's enough.
I'm waiting. You don't have to.
I have to go all the way home.
I have to go all the way home? Oh.
Can she follow me?
Can she go anywhere she wants? It's just proof that you don't listen.
Erin, thanks for coming. I was concerned that if I did ask her a question, that I would be criticized for not asking Nate a question. Nate, I'm sorry for not writing down the question for you. It's not a sign of disrespect to you by any means.
No disrespect to you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Superintendents, Mr. Del, Mrs. Tina.
Yeah, thank you for giving us the time to give a report. And I'd like to thank Gwen for stealing a little bit of my report, but that's okay. We need to have a little bit different communication other than gates and keys and things like that, so I appreciate that. But just to piggyback on what Dr. Peckron brought up is that the, as you all know, so, I surprise when I say this, our cheer team won the state title this last week. There's a little bit more to it than that. I think you also, I think it's an important thing to note that this is the first team state champion in Woodland Park School District history, so. Good chance to see it on Chassa TV or something like that, or you weren't live. If you, I think we are performing, they are performing in front of the student body tomorrow afternoon. I believe it's at 3:15. Help me if...
Correct.
Correct. I pointed at you and she said correct. Okay. Correct. I just thought you would know because of the email thing for staff or an assembly, but that's okay. So 3:15 tomorrow, they'll be doing their routine. Also, I'd like to congratulate our eighth grade boys' basketball team as they also won the league tournament and are league champions. Heard again from Dr. Peckron about Magicals and what a wonderful event it is, and she's excited to see them in January, but you can see them sooner than that if you would like, as they are holding their annual Magical Dinner on Friday and Saturday of the day after tomorrow, yeah, this weekend. Starts at 6:30. Tickets required. Chartwell is helping with the, putting the meal on. If you haven't been to the Magical's Dinner, it is an experience that you have to go see. You must go see it. It is a wonderful event. They are funny. They are, they sound incredible. And at the end, at least traditionally, they have had the, any alumni, is that still happening? Do you know?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, we're still having alumni come up and sing with us.
That is a wonderful thing. So any alumni that happens to be there that night will come up and, and I think they, is it limited to any alumni? Because I've never sang.
Unfortunately, it's just people who sung with Magical.
Okay, so people who were basketball.
Sing Silent Night with us.
So not a lousy Papa Shrek, nothing like that.
No, you said you could sing silent.
Silent, silently, got it.
You do the silent part.
Yes, solo, solo, nobody can hear me. So if you, if you want to, they come, they have the alumni, they're singing, anybody's been to Magical, they're singing Silent Night. It is an incredible, I'm just gonna keep going on. You have to go see it. So if you haven't got the tickets you needed or you want to go see and you want to support some, you know, other aspects of our community besides sports or, you know, Science Olympia, things like that, come see our activities. This is a wonderful, wonderful event, so.
Forensics meet.
What's that?
The forensic meet that happened Saturday.
And the forensics meet happened on Saturday, and I didn't get results on that one, but...
We always win a ton of medals.
We always win a ton of medals and...
We printed them from the, correct me if I'm wrong, the STEAM group printed the medals this year for the forensics.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
How many is a ton?
Sorry, I have to leave. Three.
So my daughter's on that forensics team. My daughter's on that forensics team and I was there for the award ceremony. I think we placed a top three in every category.
No kidding?
So great things happening and that was coinciding at the same time with, was it Cookies with Santa? Cookies with Santa, so the middle school was bustling with activity that day for sure, so it's great to see our kids out there. The last part of my report before I pass it to Mrs. Cassens is I do want to pass out a fact sheet to our board member concerning the Colorado Universal Pre-K program that has been voted in and registration will be opening up in January. We have been waiting a while to figure out what the, what... Yeah, the rules, the funding structure, those rules and the funding structure have come out, but... Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Unfortunately, in any new program, the rules and the funding still aren't that clear. So we're still trying to work through that and we're, like other districts, when I meet with the superintendents in the area, the response was, "Yeah, we don't know what we're gonna do." So it's pretty tricky. It does involve the school district because we offer preschool and it's a licensed preschool and it will also impact any of our local licensed daycare preschool facilities that do that. So, you know, what happens in January is that parents are wanting to do that. They register through Bridge or...
Bridges.
Bridges, yeah. And then our local coordinating organization, we call the LCO, will actually distribute the slots to those available within the county. So it's a, likely a first come, first served, because I don't know that we have that many slots, but they do say it's universal, but we'll see what universal means.
They have claimed that they have enough money for anyone that's requesting.
They do, but they don't have, they don't necessarily know that they have enough providers to provide the slots.
Well, and with that, we do. So let me tag team with that. Can I tag you?
Yeah, absolutely.
We will be reopening Columbine Elementary Preschool. So we will have a preschool center that isn't at Gateway and then branches at both Summit and at Columbine. And we will staff through July 1st, June 1st, for anyone that is wanting to enroll in preschool. So we have committed to that.
For more slots.
Yes.
Keep ears open for future updates on what that funding looks like.
I was gonna ask you some questions on it, just what, well, if you know sort of the timeline, are we just sort of waiting in the, like, influx for that budget? Or how that will affect our upcoming year?
Yeah, so I would anticipate as we go through the budget process, we'd have a much greater idea about the, how the, because the, here's the trick, is that the hours that are being paid by the state or the, yeah, by the state don't necessarily match the hours of part-time in our district, so.
Okay.
It's a little off, so we gotta decide, is there a difference and we have to charge tuition, as we currently do? Or we do not, how much are qualified for half-days, how many are qualified for full-days? Because the guarantee is 10 hours per week. And then there's some qualifying things that allow you to get further. So what we don't know is the, is the ratio of some of those higher impact versus lower impact and what that means for our total budget going forward.
Okay.
And...
Anything else?
Yeah, I don't, did you guys hear about a student walk-in today?
I did.
No, just kidding. Go ahead.
You can sing for us?
No, singing, no. I did Silent Night.
You can Shrek.
Shrek, yes.
Tina?
So I will turn the mood a little differently because I feel like I need to recognize some efforts in the district this past week. So on Monday, our middle school faced probably what's considered to be the hardest day in an educator's career, which is the death of a student. And I would be remiss if I did not recognize the efforts of the middle school staff as well as what we call our Critical Incident Response Team, which includes Josh Justman, Marilyn Bemus, Laura Magnussen, Kathy Marford, and Bill Thalen. We walked alongside with our middle school staff and we talk a lot about how our staff care. But you don't see care until you stand in front of the staff that's facing the death of a student and how it impacts them. And you don't see care until you see how they can compartmentalize that and walk side by side with students that are facing the death of a classmate, that impacted them in amazing ways. So I just feel like I'm so proud of this team, so I feel like I needed to say that. But I also know, I know that any team of teachers in this district would have done the exact same thing because I watch them do it every day for our kids and our kids know it. Our kids know that they're, and they tell us that, they know that the staff care. So I just want to thank the middle school staff, the care team, but I want to thank all of our staff, including the Merritt staff. So Merritt staff said, "We got guest teachers over here. If you need them, we'll send them through the door and they'll cover classes for you." And we heard that across the district. So I just, I would be remiss if I did not thank them and honor the remembrance of a very special seventh grade student. So I feel like as a community, we need to recognize that. So I feel like as a community, we need to recognize that, especially as we head into the holidays, that we honor our families. We love our families. We bring kindness. That's what we gave to our seventh grade, our middle school kids the next day. We said, "Healing comes through kindness. It comes through support. It comes through making a difference in people's lives, especially in the holidays." And I believe it's today that's the 10th anniversary of Sandy Hook. So again, it's that, just bring kindness to each other in the holidays. That's what our kids are doing. And they're setting the way and we need to take their lead. So thank you.
Okay. We're on to Board of Education reports. Cassie and Sue, do you have any comments?
Actually, Tina and Dell sort of stole my thunder from comments I wanted to talk about. So, but especially hitting the no one ahead of what happened this weekend, just losing the death of a student. I went through that when I was in school and we lost a classmate that was struggling with brain cancer for many years. And that, for the small district in the school, it really brings community together, people together. So thank you for your words because kindness does matter. When someone loses someone during, for the holidays, it's really hard. So my heart and my thoughts go out to them and their families.
Thank you, Cassie. I got a call from Tina over the weekend and when the student, we lost this student and I just have to say, my heart goes out to the family and the friends of the student. And I was very impressed when Tina told me about the care that our school community gives to these kids, to the staff, to the friends, and just special counseling that comes in and how, how much that means to the kids. And I am continually impressed with our school district and the love and care that so many have for each other. It is wonderful to see that love come out. So thank you. Thank you for organizing that and making that happen. And you spent the entire day at the middle school, didn't you? Thank you. That's just over and above and I really appreciate that and respect it highly. Also, I wanted to congratulate our sports teams and the girls cheerleading as well. We just have so many amazing little niches that are in this district and for not being a big district, we just have a wonderful staff that just love their kids and do so, so many great things. Want to end with, thank you for everybody coming tonight and I really do appreciate the different points of view. Kirshid and I have had wonderful, respectful conversations and, you know, I just, I want to thank you for coming. Carol, I appreciate you as well. You know, we disagree on some things, but you know, we still stand together as a, as a community. I want to thank you for the support and thank you for the criticism, the polite criticism that we had tonight. It's important. It's important that we have these dialogues. So thank you all for coming. And I, last, I don't know if we'll see you at the 18th or at our...
19th. The 19th.
Monday?
The 19th.
That's what I said, Monday the 19th. So Monday the 19th, yes. So I hope you all have a great holiday season. Want to wish you a happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas to everyone. And just let kindness ring. Thank you for coming. Do you have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Ruster Holmes?
Aye.